Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Bieber Health's First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous people. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Nishawapen, Ojibwe Cree, and Maytee people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. I'll have a call to order in the moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved with the agenda for the regular meeting of council held Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 be approved as circularity.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest.
I have one in the...
None noted. Item number four, petitions and delegations. None noted this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, item 5.1, minutes of council.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved with council include the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held June 6th, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item 5.2, minutes of committees of council.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be resolved with council adopt the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Museum Advisory Committee held March 28th, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item 5.3, minutes of local and regional boards.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. Be resolved with council receive the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Tamiskamink Municipal Association held May 25th, 2023, and minutes of the Tamiskamink Health Board held May 23rd, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. 6.1, request to purchase 56 Hudson Bay Avenue, Brooklyn Rose on acting planning administrator.
Madam Mayor, council, a request purchased was received from Sebastian Mistrilli for 56 Hudson Bay Avenue. The property was declared surplus land in 2008 and has been vacant ever since. Mr. Mistrilli owns the property directly across the street and intends to use the land as extra yard and working space since he does not own the portion of land that his driveway sits on and is relying on a verbal agreement with that property owner. On June 6th, 2023, council resolved to move forward with the land sale. The associated bylaw will be brought forward at the July 11th regular meeting of council. A notice of intent to dispose of surplus land will be circulated in the newspaper and on the town's website starting June 23rd. The land sale will result in a revenue of $10,040 as well as future tax revenue and a small cost was incurred for the legislative advertising of the town's intended to sell.
And so, thank you. Thank you. Any questions from council on this item? None noted, I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved with report number 2023, DEV 26 entitled Request to Purchase 56 Hudson Bay Avenue be received for information.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item number 6.2, general housekeeping of various bylaws, Madam Chair.
Madam Mayor, through you, fellow council, good evening, members. As noted in the report, from a very high level, administration is seeking to conduct some housekeeping stemming from some staffing changes and jurisdictional orders. With the recent departure of the deputy treasurer, repeal to this appointment is in order. When discussing business continuity, sorry, with the recent, when discussing business continuity, administrations ought to be proactive and with specific roles and responsibilities of the town and are proposing to generalize the appointments of bylaws moving forward by positions held by employees who have established legislative duties as officers for the corporation. This would allow the formal appointment to run in line with job descriptions and for the duration of the employment of the designated staff, resulting in an automatic change management process removing the need to bring future appointment bylaws or repealing bylaws of this nature. In terms of the fees associated with the nuisance pigeon bylaw, staff are proposing a long overdue amendment to the bylaw to reflect the adjustment made to set fines as established and approved by the former regional senior justice in 2018. As noted in the report, it is of particular importance to address this as the way the bylaw is currently written and presented. This leaves general public on the place of compliance. Which in my comments, Madam Mayor, I mean, welcome questions if there are any of council.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None noted, I'll have a reading of the bylaw, the motion.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved with report number 2023, CLK 004 entitled General Housekeeping of Various Bylaws be received. And then bylaw number 22024 being a bylaw to appoint a deputy treasurer for the town of Kirkland Lake be hereby repealed. And then bylaw number 18117 being a bylaw to prohibit the peeling and extracting of pigeons within the town of Kirkland Lake be hereby amended to adjust the set fines as per the order received from the former regional senior justice of the Ontario Court of Justice having taken effect on August 11th, 2018. And finally, that the amending bylaw to bylaw number 83117 and a bylaw to appoint deputy treasurer be presented for three readings on June 20th, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item 6.3, emergency response plan update and appointment of primary and alternate CEMCs. Sean McCarty, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through your council. Under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, Ontario Regulation 384, every municipality and province is required to develop an emergency management program. Our main reason for bringing this forward tonight is to have council appoint a new CEMC. As you know, we're a director of emergency management, sorry, director of emergency services slash fire chief started a month or so ago. And we're looking to move Earl Rigg into the primary CEMC role. We're also looking to move myself to an alternate CEMC role. And Kristi Kozet was already in the C alternate. We're also to have two alternates. So that's the main changes to the response plan tonight. The other changes would be, we have a few housekeeping items in terms of adding the director of... Director of Emergency Services Fire Chief, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Development Services. They all have all changed in staffing. So just adding their names and titles and phone numbers into the appendix from your control group. Administration recommended the appointment of the new primary alternate and secondary alternate CEMCs as well as the approval of the updated staff control group, form an emergency management program and response plan. And we will look forward to bringing this forward again later on in the year. There's a few more updates to do to the plan for tonight. Want to share any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? None noted, I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved with report number 2023, CRP 3 entitled Emergency Response Plan Update and Appointment of Primary and Alternate CEMCs be received. And the council authorized to propose amendments to the town's emergency response plan as presented. And the council hereby appoint Earl Rigg, Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief as primary community emergency management coordinator or primary CEMC for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. And that council hereby appoint Sean McCarty, Director of Corporate Services as an alternate community emergency management coordinator, alternate CEMC for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. And the council hereby appoint Kristi Kovak, firefighter or secondary alternate community emergency management coordinator or secondary or alternate CEMC for the corporation of town Kirkland Lake. And finally, the council authorized a bylaw adopting the amendments to the town's emergency response plan, including the appointments for primary, alternate and secondary alternate community emergency management coordinators, CEMCs be brought forward for three readings on June 20th, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item 6.4, request for delegated authority, extension agreements during tax registration. Ms. McCarty may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through your council. I'm also going to ask the treasurer, Lloyd Crocker, to come up and go through the report. He's going to give a little bit of information. Administration is seeking council's approval and delegating authority to the treasurer to allow the town to enter an extension agreement for properties registered for tax sale in the Florence Municipal Act. Section 378 of the municipal act as amended provides that after registration of the tax rears certificate and before the expiry of one year, following the date of registration, a municipality may authorize an extension agreement. It should be noted that the legislation restricts municipalities in accepting and collecting partial payments. However, to provide some flexibility, an extension agreement allows a qualified applicant to enter into an agreement to extend the time before a tax sale may take place. Qualified applicant would be an owner of the land, spouse of the owner, a mortgagee, and then tenant of the land, which I'm not 100% sure is, we'll have to make a look into that for... Legislation reform made the municipal act under Bill 68 Modernization Ontario's Municipal Legislation provides councils the ability to delegate their authority to enter into extension agreements. It may not always be possible to report to council within the time parameter set by the municipal act and having council sanction extension agreements for the purpose of property taxation. As a result, council's delegation of authority to the treasurer will streamline this process and assist in eliminating tax registrations. In my past, my past employment with municipality, I noticed that many, many of the people in their tax registration will wait till the absolute last minute. They figured out that things are happening and they're going to see their bank, but it's too late by the time they ask to come back to councils. That's the reason for we're going forward with this. I just will ask Lloyd, the reason we're bringing this forward is obviously we've had, you know, our arrears is quite high at the town and still remains and we are looking to remit to this. But I'll just let Lloyd get a little bit of that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to council. Good, right? So it's been requested that we give kind of a report on where the tax rears now are. And given some of our circumstances, I'm not really able to come up with a full, full and all kinds of detail type of report. But I put together where things stand today and I'll give you a short summary of that. It ties into this particular motion because we're planning on putting over 40 properties out to tax sale the next few weeks. We're using a corporation down south, which this is our business. We just don't have enough resources to do it ourselves. So we'll take you the opportunity to kind of give you an idea of where we are. So right now, tax rears standard, just over $3 million. 888,000 of that is current, that means it's less than one year. 880,000 is one year, between one and two years in the collection. Year two is 389,000 and three and beyond that is 867,000. So that $3 million is 747 properties. Just keep in mind, the number seems huge, but a very large piece of that is the one-year group. So they're not all, you know, delinquent. They're still, you know, we're still in the current one-year period. So there's always some lag and some people take their time paying and they're not really delinquent, what we would call delinquent accounts. There's 4,708 accounts or properties, just to give you a kind of some context about the 700 that are in arrears. We have identified, so through the, we go through an audit process. And in that audit process, we identify any accounts that are characterized or delinquent. Now, delinquent can vary quite a bit from property to property, but most of the time it's just people not making any effort to make any payments. Or if they had an agreement that was to make payments, they stopped doing it or they've changed it on their own without our input. So that number, there's about 1.4 million on that list. The 40-something odd tax sale properties we've selected represent about $400,000 worth of arrears taxes. It's kind of our first kick at the can. You've got another 40 sitting in the wings that we can go to once we get through the process with those 40 or toward the end of the process with the 40 at least. In the fall, we sent out over 100 letters to these delinquent accounts, basically warning them that we're starting the tax sale process. Unfortunately, tax sale process is a very slow one. So anyways, that's where we are sitting basically at this point in time. With regards to the, to the agreements, it basically, in the past, any type of extension agreement required to go to council, as Sean mentioned. And many of them wait till the last minute. But the other thing to keep in mind is an extension agreement stops the time, stops the clock ticking on that one-year period of the tax sale period. So we want to be able to kind of be flexible and respond to changes. Somebody comes into the office and as soon as they get the tax sale registration, they go, okay, time to get serious. They come in and talk to us. So we don't want to wait two or three months to get it onto the agenda. And then every single one of these has to be approved individually by councils. We're trying to create some flexibility there. You will be informed of those extension agreements. They're not, it's not me making a decision on your behalf. And just to kind of give you some framework, my original plan in this area is, you know, they basically have the tax sale time period to come up with the arrears. That's kind of the general rule. Now, when you're sitting across from somebody, they'll tell you their story, they'll give you a little why they're where they are and what they can do. So some of that might vary. But as they come in and as we negotiate them, we'll report back to council in periodic points in time to give you an idea of what's going on on that, on that front. Because basically, basically everything I wanted to cover. You happy to answer questions or any concerns you might have?
Thank you for that, Lloyd. Just a reminder, that was additional information that we certainly appreciate to give us a gauge of where we stand in relation to this motion. The motion is to allow for delegation, basically. So just, just a reminder that that is an extra information, very good information and very thorough information, but we want to stick to what's being debated this evening and not to kind of go down the garden path the way sometimes we do. So saying that, is there questions regarding the motion? Councillor Duffins.
Can I, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor? Can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
I just want to say I appreciate that there's a strategy being developed to address this. That's it. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie.
Yeah, I'm pleased that we're making progress. And for a while, previous administration didn't have that many, as 40 potential groups that we were going to send the tax notice out to. So it sounds like we're on top. So keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Anything further from members of council? I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be resolved with report number 2023, FIN 006 entitled Request for Delegated Authority Extension Agreements for Tax Participation be received. And council hereby delegates its authority to the treasurer to enter into extension agreements pursuant to section 2378 of the municipal act 2001 as amended. And finally, that a delegation by law be brought forward for three readings on June 20th, 2023.
All in favor, opposed, item carried. Item number 6.1, signing authorities and policy update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through your council. With the recent resignation of our deputy treasurer, the signing authorities require an update. This will be a short-term change. We're hoping to have a deputy treasurer in place next month and this will come back to council with the signing authorities. For now, the recommendation is to provide signatory letters to myself, to corporate services, to the treasurer in the absence. We're just trying to back ourselves in case that should happen.
Any questions from the table? None noted.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved with report number 2023, FIN 007 entitled Signing Authorities and Policy Update be received. Then council, FIN 2023, 001 Signing Authority Policy. And finally, that FIN 2023, 001 Signing Authority Policy be inserted into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item 6.6, hockey monument relocation, Bonnie Saffrider, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to council. Almost 52 years ago, the owners of the Adams Mine did present a 7-ton hockey monument to the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. It was first displayed at the Wright Harbors Park and it was moved a number of years later after repeated vandalism to what we now know as Ten Government Road. That is the site of what we may know as the ONTC building or the building that's a little older, the Kirkland Lake Old Arena, which had a number of, number of names. Unfortunately, it now sits behind a construction fence after a fire a few years ago. So there has been some interest in the community to relocate this hockey monument to a more appropriate location. So I have consulted with a number of the people who were interested. They feel that there is a strong interest in having it at the Yom Avanak community complex, the site of where we now have our future hockey players. So this report basically explains what the cost would be and how the cost could be funded. The Department of Public Works is able to do the majority of the moving. However, there's quite a lot of other work that has to be done. So a fabrication of a hook will have to be done to put onto the hockey monument, port weight of it, lift it up, create a base, the three bar, things like that. So the cost is coming in around $4,100, just a little bit more than that. Pleased to say that there's a couple of gentlemen in the community who have a lot of interest. So we did get information from the total operating authority that they have approved a $1,000 donation towards the moving of the monument. And we also have a volunteer in the community who has an interest in obtaining more donations to go towards the $4,000 to get it moved. So presenting to you a couple of options. One is the location, is the location appropriate in council's mind? And is the funding appropriate in this method? Or is it something that council would like to self-fund through perhaps a reserve fund or through a future year's operating budget? The recommendation that staff have is to move it to the Yom Avanak community complex and do move it once the funds are raised.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councillor Owen.
Yeah, I understand the logic behind wanting it at the complex. But I'm wanting it, it's not overkill because we have all the photos, paintings, whatever, all the way around the inside of the complex with same players. And then we're going to drop this monument in front with all the same information. It's mine, it's photos. That would be my only concern, you know. Were other locations seriously considered? And before you answer that, I'm just going to say, I'm all in favor of the funding being raised by the community. And knowing the people involved or the person that put his name forward, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that he will be able to bring in that amount of money, if not more for landscaping, whatever. But it definitely shouldn't stay where it is. And if the complex is the best location, we'll find them.
Thank you. Councillor Ranger.
I like the idea of the location, I think, considering where it has been in the past with the intensive vandalism. The location that's being recommended will have eyes on it and chances of it being damaged. Whereas if it was relocated to even across the street of that park at the chances of it, you know, being vandalized unfortunately is higher than it would be if it was at the complex. And it's not in physically the same location as suggesting potential overkill. But for those maybe out of, like, closed hours of the complex and it being part of the virtual tour or the dot in the, in the... I'm in favor of that. Again, I support Rex and that I know that there are people in the community who'd be happy to contribute and some local clubs that can be approached that would support that.
Thank you for that. Councillor Owens.
I support councillor Ranger on moving it to the complex. I think it's, it's a fitting location that, I mean, it's hockey thing, yeah, there's pictures inside, but I don't think we can reinforce before the comment in a 7-ton stainless steel inside of there. Waiting, no, because according to this report, like, the letter determination agreement between ONTC or the owners of the building is like from 2018. We don't know what's going to happen with this building. Is there any way, like, if we know the money's coming, can we start working on moving this thing sooner rather than later? Or do we need to wait for the 4,000? Because 4,000, $4,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money to raise. So I'm quite confident that this community can come up with funds.
If I may, yeah, Madam Mayor, to councillor Owen. If that's the direction of council, it can be done. You're right, it's not a large amount of money and we do have 1,000 against it already. I am confident the funds will be raised as well. It is a risk though. So if, if we went forward with it and the funds weren't raised, then the municipality would be on the hook. So it's what is the comfort level of council to take that risk?
So, yeah, councillor Owen.
To you, your worship. I'd be all in favor of taking out of the park reserve fund or whatever it's called, excuse my ignorance, and paying it back once the money is raised. I mean, we're not talking huge bucks here. And we're not talking huge risk to the rate payers. And I agree with councillor Owens that the sooner we do it, then we're going to know that we still own it, we still have access to it. You know, so I'd be all in favor of taking it, starting today and taking it. So after the meeting, I'm just sitting down there on the second shelf.
Councillor Ranger.
Do you, Madam Mayor, some of the clerks, a motion would have to be put? So do you want to put a motion?
Yeah, I'll put a motion forward to smoke the thing today.
So...
Do you, to utilize the funds of the park, or?
That's...
And those... Sure.
I'll let the clerk write the part.
Yeah.
I have to, through you, Madam Mayor, to all council, I'd like to confirm with the treasurer on the language in terms of the replenishment of the reserve. How would you like that identified?
I'd like, I'd like to suggest that, which you could say is, make the move. We can cash flow the project and to the extent that fundraising falls short of your goal, we can top it up from the parkland reserve, perhaps that type of approach.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Douglas.
To you, Madam Mayor, to director and secretary, but the Yom Avanak, Madam, complexes waving please. Where, where, do you have an idea of where to find it? Because somebody asked me what to get in there.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor Dykens. We were considering the location under the signage, which says Yom Avanak community's complex with the lights on top. So what we anticipate doing there is we've already purchased a seating that was provided through funded dollars, a nice octagonal table that we're going to place there with some shrubs that was all funded as part of the signage donation. And then we could add the monument fairly close. So it has a nice little seating area and it's quite aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. Any further questions from council before we have the reading of the motion?
The amendment.
The amendment of the motion.
Okay. Just want to make sure I have the right terminology. What a fun...
Have a fund. Yeah. Okay, so moved by Counsel Owens, seconded by Counselor Ranger, that an amendment to the main motion take place to include and Parkland Reserve Funds be utilized for the project. And should fundraising fall short of the total cost of the project, that any overages be drawn from the Parkland Reserve? Thank you.
Reload it.
Yes. So it would be that the Parkland Reserve be utilized for the project. And should any fundraising fall short, the total cost of the project, sorry, should any fundraising fall short of the total cost of the project, that any shortfall, shortfall, thank you, I wrote overages. There's any shortfall be drawn from the Parkland Reserve?
Okay, so at the start, I would suggest we see temporarily use the Parkland Reserve?
Temporarily, okay. So that temporarily, the Parkland Reserve be utilized to fund the project?
Cash flow?
Pardon?
Cash flow?
To cash flow?
Yeah. My understanding here is we're just looking to be able to pay for the move at this point?
Yep.
And go ahead.
Okay, so temporarily, is that the Parkland Reserve be utilized to cash flow the project? And should fundraising fall short of the total cost of the project, that any shortfall be drawn from the Parkland Reserve?
Fair. There is it. All in favor? Opposed, not noted, amendment is passed. Thank you. Yeah, it's the next motion?
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel Patrick Riley, be resolved that Report Number Twenty Twenty Three, CS Zero Zero Two, entitled Hockey Monument Relocation, be received. And finally, that Counsel approved the relocation of the hockey monument from Ten Government Road to the Joe Mavernak Community Complex, once the funds are, we'll take that out. Period.
So that part is taken out once funds are?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. I do apologize, Counselor Dickens, at this moment. Would you take my chair as I have a motion in the next? Yeah. So item number seven is consideration of notices of motion. I will have Counselor Dickens be Acting Mayor at this moment. Sorry for not giving you the heads up, fine, waiting for that. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
Sorry, I do apologize Acting Mayor Dickens for no crap on this. So I do have a motion for consideration this evening titled Annual Spring Garbage Pickup. It did come to light often during the campaign period. It has come up during budget surveys as well. And many Council members have noted that members of the public often request a return to the annual spring pickup. This motion here is just for the request to get information so we can make data-informed decisions. And this is what I'm requesting this evening. Any questions from Counsel? Are you ready for the reading? Oh, Counsel Owen?
To you, Acting Mayor Dickens. In this case, we have previous data that staff will be able to pull on in terms of making up the report. So it's not going to be a really huge, it's a demand on time, but it's not going to be a huge demand on time because we have a number of years where we ran that program and it's reason enough that that data should be still available. So I just want to reiterate that it's not it's not going to be a huge demand on time.
Thank you, Counsel Owen. Counselor Kylie?
To you, your worship. The fact that we're going to get some data as a number of the volunteers being used is think important, it'll give us a good idea whether program is still warranted or not. So I encourage approval.
Thank you, Counsel Kylie. Anyone else? Any other questions? You been for the reading?
Certainly moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Rick Owen. Whereas the community of Kirkland Lake once supported cleanup week events where residents could place up to the equivalent of a half-ton pickup truck of refuse at the end of their property annually in the spring and fall until the early twenty-tens. And whereas cleanup week was then replaced by an annual spring and fall fee to free tipping fee week. And whereas the Town of Kirkland Lake established a voucher program on June first, twenty twenty-one to assist in mitigating the challenges and inefficiencies identified with the free tipping fee week events. And whereas the Council of the Town of Kirkland Lake finds it too serious to make informed and fact-based decisions while continuing to be committed to improving the appearance of the community. Therefore, we have resolved with Counsel request that an information report be presented including the usage of the town's voucher program and projected costs associated with returning to the original cleanup week events in order to make a determination on annual spring garbage pickup events.
Those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Thank you, Counselor Dickens. I do appreciate that without any further future warning, I will not do this to you again.
Can you make a note of that?
Yeah. Item number eight point one, breaking the bylaws.
Moved by Counsel Dennis Ranger, seconded by Counsel Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the Seal of the Corporation be fixed there too. File number twenty-three forty-four being a bylaw to adopt an emergency management program, an emergency response plan for the Town of Kirkland Lake and to appoint a community emergency management coordinator.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. Eight point two?
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel Patrick Riley, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the Seal of the Corporation be fixed there too. File number twenty-three forty-five being a bylaw to delegate authority in authorizing the execution of the extension agreements to the Treasurer.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, item eight point three?
Moved by Counsel Dennis Ranger, seconded by Counsel Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the Seal of the Corporation be fixed there too. File number twenty-three forty-six, the bylaw amending bylaw eighteen one seventeen, being a bylaw to prohibit the feeding and attracting of pigeons in the Town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous, item eight point four?
Moved by Counsel Rick Owens, seconded by Counsel Patrick Riley, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the Seal of the Corporation be fixed there too. File number twenty-three forty-seven being a bylaw to appoint Deputy Treasurer for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. Item number nine, question from Counsel staff, there were none. Items number ten, notices of motion? Not noted from the floor. Item number eleven point one, updates from member of Counsel and Mayor's office. Counsel Kylie?
To you, your worship. The Mayor and I attended a group session with some interested members of the Town of Kirkland Lake. We want to put together a plan to help beautify the town. We tossed around some different ideas as to how to approach it and they're getting their group together and hopefully come back with some future plans. There are a lot of derelict properties in town that need to be cleaned up. And it's just, we're going to have a plan to encourage the public to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from Counsel members? Okay, for my portion of the evening, since our last meeting, June sixth, we attended and gave one of the opening speeches at the Canadian Mining Expo as well as took part in the drilling competition. Sadly, there is no probing. I called, I was fixed because somebody took it that had taken it before. But it was certainly an interesting day. And the only two mayors involved in that competition were the Mayor of Timmins and Luxa. So both female mayors. I presented Wild North Adventures Bat House, a certificate for their grand opening. And this really supports local economic development. And I think moving forward, the Town of Kirkland Lake will certainly continue to do this practice that they have in the past where openings and celebrations, our presence is felt. I attended the event in Hollinger Park to support Timmins Pride members. They came all the way there to support when we did our unveiling of a crosswalk. So I felt that it was only fair and right of us to go support them in their endeavors. It was a wonderful event attended by their mayor as well. So it's good connectivity for our communities. I attended the Arts Gala at Central School. We have really, really amazing young artists and I really look forward and encourage members of the public and Counsel. They do, they have held exhibits at our museum. So it's wonderful. And if you can stop by when they do have their exhibits out there, it's really worth checking out future artists in our community. I finally moved to my office downstairs. So I am now more readily accessible on the main floor. I am in the office most afternoons, Monday to Friday, with Tuesdays being a full day. That being said, however, I do have public engagements. So if you want to stop in or have an appointment, I encourage the public to give me a call first and make sure I am indeed in the office. I attended the Library Board Meeting this past Thursday. And we're certainly getting good news coming regarding the Children's Refresh Project. If anybody would like to donate, any amount is welcome, even five dollars. Give what you can, when you can. It's an amazing project and it is fully funded by donations. And you can just call the library at seven oh five, five six seven, nine, nine, no, five six seven, seven nine six six for details of how to donate. I attended a luncheon with Dr. Penner, President of the Northern College, to receive updates on academic programs and lab and field equipment. I cannot stress enough how fortunate the Town of Kirkland Lake is to have a college campus in our area and they continue to contribute to our economic development and the over quality of life for our entire community. So I definitely thank them for their continued presence. I presented Pop's Cannabis with a certificate on their two-year anniversary. The regional manager was shocked that the local mayor was present. But I assured her that the Town of Kirkland Lake appreciates and supports every single business. And we want to celebrate their celebrations with them. And as local business grows, so does the Town of Kirkland Lake. As Counsel Kylie mentioned, we met with a small group of individuals interested in the beautification and cleanliness of our community. I certainly commend this group on their efforts and hope they can gain a strong network of volunteers. I attended the event in New Liskard on the boardwalk to support Timmins Gaming Pride as they too came down and supported us. So again, it's all about making connections through the north. I invite all staff and Counsel to join me at Kinross this Saturday at one PM to join the volunteers putting on the Kirkland Lake Pride Walk. These individuals are young and they work so hard to contribute in our community in a positive and inclusive way. Today was day one of the market and there was a lineup at three o'clock. So it's definitely going over very, very well as always, and I encourage everybody in town to go visit. And finally, we have a special announcement. We have a retirement this month. Wilford Haas, who is not here with us tonight, marks the end of a very, very interesting and electric career with the Town of Kirkland Lake. He's worn so many hats over his decades of service. And I don't think anybody has collected as many hats as Mr. Haas over the years. Maybe Bonnie, but and we certainly thank him for his years of service and dedication to our community. And we wish him all the joy and excitement his retirement may offer him. So wherever wealth is, probably fishing, we do appreciate everything you have done for this community. So thank you very much. Madam clerk?
Moved by Counsel Dolly Dickens, seconded by Counsel Dennis Ranger, be resolved that the verbal updates from members of Counsel and the Office of the Mayor be received.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. There is no additional information this evening. And we will now take a brief recess of about ten minutes before adjournment in camera. Thank you, everyone. I'll have the reading of the motion to move into close.
Moved by Counsel Patrick Riley, seconded by Counsel Casey Owens, be resolved with Counsel adjournment camera pursuant to Section Two Thirty Nine Two of Municipal Act Two Thousand and One as amended. Discuss personal matters with identifiable individuals, the Municipal Local Board employees, litigation or potential litigation to the matters of the Board of Municipal Tribunals affecting municipal or local boards. The vice that is subject to solicitor fine privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or incentive to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the Municipal or Local Board at five thirty-seven PM for the following reasons, item thirteen point one, supplemental kale solar aid update, and item thirteen point two, verbal reports, supplemental committee of Counsel public.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. So I'll have the motion to rise from closed session.
Moved by Counsel Casey Owens, seconded by Counsel Dolly Dickens, be resolved with Counsel reconvene in open session at six oh eight PM.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous. Any items of community interest coming from close?
Yes, I, Dennis Ranger, declaring an indirect community interest on the agenda of the meeting dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Open meeting agenda, item number fourteen. Agenda matter, matters from closed session is indirect. There's a conflict of interest on matters discussed.
Thank you. Item number fourteen point one, supplemental committee of Counsel public appointment.
Moved by Counsel Casey Owens, seconded by Counsel Patrick Riley, be resolved that Patina LaCarne be appointed to the Kirkland Lake Community Standards and Kirkland Lake Property Standards Committees for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term of Counsel.
All in favor? Opposed, not noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number fifteen point one?
Moved by Counsel Dolly Dickens, seconded by Counsel Dennis Ranger, be resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the Seal of the Corporation be fixed there too. File number twenty-three forty-eight being allowed to refer the proceedings of Counsel at its meeting held Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counsel Rose Owens, seconded by Counsel Dolly Dickens, be resolved that this regular meeting with Counsel is now adjourned at six oh nine PM.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Thank you, one and all.